All right, I'll call the May meeting of the Williston Board of School Directors to order at 7:10. So we've already got to catch up five more minutes. Two dot O, adjustments to the agenda. We'll move, in Section Five, we'll move Program Council up to the top and let them speak first. And then if you turn your, do you need one by the way? I got an extra one, Josh.
The agenda?
Yeah.
Actually, okay.
Yeah, there you go. We're going to strike seven dot three dot five and seven dot three dot seven. They were never ours to have. They were actually supposed to be on the CSSU and they got mixed up, so. The rest of the personnel ones, though, we do have. So, does anybody have any other adjustments? Okay, nothing needs to be called out of consent.
The field's at Allenbrook School, if we can...
Why don't we do that in discussion?
Okay.
Okay?
I didn't know if we needed to.
Nope, we'll just, we'll just, I'll just make note. And we'll do it at the end as part of discussion. Okay, so let's get started. Presentations. English language learners. I can't even say "language," so I'm already in trouble.
[inaudible]
Oh, sorry. I thought we were going to go after it, but that makes total sense, though.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I, I have not introduced myself. I'm Chris Sadech-Lauten. I'm one of the co-facilitators of the Williston School District Program Council. And I'm just here to tell you a little bit about what we've done this year and where we hope to go next year. About a year ago, we thought about how could we, since we're a really representative body for the Williston School District, how could we take on topics and issues in an organized way so that we could see them from when they're starting to how they're kind of continuing in a feedback loop? And also, how could we really talk about where those initiatives or ideas were in their process that other people in the district could understand easily? So, we did a lot of work on that last year to kind of come up with that idea. And this year was really defined as a year where we took that process and we used it for things that were actually going on in the school district. So, after our initial meeting in October to get our new members up to speed, we have a new rotation system so that we're really getting new members in every year. So not only are we getting new input, but also that idea of thinking about the Williston School District as a system is getting out there in our community so that more and more teachers are aware of it and are thinking in that terms, which I think will be pretty beneficial to our system. After that, and discussing budget packets in November, we took on two different topics. One in February, I'm sorry, March, and then one last Tuesday where we thought about this process. So, in March, we did something really new. It's called, we call it the State of the Schools. It's based on a model that the administration team has used for a while where they'll get very focused presentations on current systems, programs in the district, and what might be challenges as a way to start thinking about how you could improve those systems or initiatives. So, we brought it to Program Council because we thought that would be a good way to start our members and who they talk with in their own constituencies to think about, well, we've got this problem. Let's think of it as a system rather than it's this person's problem that they need to figure out. Let's get representatives from everybody, from across the district, to look at it and what comes from that. So we had three topics that were presented. One was the STRIDE program, WCS. The second was literacy interventions at the Tier Two level in third and fourth grade. And the third was the use of the reading recovery model in Allenbrook in the first grade. And people gave presentations. Small focus groups worked to brainstorm ideas to address challenges in those systems. And we were able to present a list of recommendations which the administrators took with them. And some of them they'd actually been able to work on right away and others they would need to move on in the year. So we felt that was very successful. And we were able to, again, to say to the folks on Program Council, so this is, this is where this idea was, say, for STRIDE. We put our input in, the administration made some decisions, and we're at this point in the process. And it makes it easier for folks to talk to their representatives about, well, where are things going? Are things lost? Have we heard anything about this initiative? It's very easy to talk about that. The other thing that we did this year, which was last week, is the Program Council representatives decided they wanted to talk about initiatives. At first, that topic, that term was pretty nebulous. It was kind of like initiatives. It was this big idea of what's an initiative. So we really focused in on things, initiatives, mostly curricular or like positive behavior intervention system as things that the district has taken on, selected to do, and how can we support educators so that those things are successful and as it continues on through time, that it continues to be improved? And so, it's a topic that there is, you know, there are a lot of theories about, a lot of thoughts and some emotions. But again, having this process already established for how to talk about it enabled us to have a really positive discussion last Tuesday. And again, we were able to come up with a list of recommendations for the administration to think about how we could get a dialogue going as we take on new initiatives to make sure that it's working and that it lasts and that we see improvement in the work. So, what our next step is, so we've gone from coming up with a process, trying it out in some real-life applications. Our goal, our big hope is to be a place where new ideas are also welcomed and can have a place to be discussed and thought about. And when I say new ideas, it's really things that people have for visions for the district or ways to improve how we're affecting student outcomes, things like those. And really just allowing people to feel like, hey, I've got an idea. And here's, Program Council's a place where I could share it and we could start working with it. So that's one of our big pushes for next year as we move on. So, that's where we are at this point, and it was great to have the time to do that. If you have any questions, we have to answer.
Lee, I would just add that each year the budget cycle is backing up. And it's supposed to have less time from the first day of school and all of a sudden decision packets are due at the end of October. And we rely on everybody to really look at the system and write decision packets. And what we said is that we don't have enough time to really study anything in depth. And that's why we said, we can do a State of the Schools and we can really look at, what do we think are some really key ideas to get ahead of and look at now so that when you get into the summer, we already have the information? And it doesn't mean that we're going to spend more money. It means we've at least looked at the situation and come up with some ideas. And some of them are just adjustments to what we're currently doing more than anything else. Or it could be that we're understaffed. It could be that we need to change what we're doing and do something different. But the idea is to get ahead of it so that when the budget season comes, we're ready. We've already done a lot of the work. The teachers have talked it over and we're ready to really move forward. So we have three areas at least for next year that we've already said, look at these three. These are something that we know that, I mean, one of the issues on STRIDE is alternative program, it's capacity. How many people can you actually have? And reading recovery, it is what happens if a student needs a double dip? If you look at the ratios of what they recommend for reading recovery teachers to the population, we're not quite there and therefore we're missing one gear of being able to help students. So, that's kind of what we were studying. And the other one is Tier Two. Just Tier Two interventions means that a student needs something else. And what do we have in place at every grade level, starting at, you know, kindergarten all the way up through eighth? But we were looking primarily at right around the third and fourth grade levels to see what do we have in place right now? And the other thing that you had brought us, brought up, Josh, when we were talking about math, which has stuck with me all along, is what are the numbers? What can you say is how many students are looking for this service and what's our capacity? And matching those two up and saying, no, we can show that we match up, or no, we don't. And what's the gap? So that's a piece of something we tried brand-new with that form, which you saw. It's in your packet then.
Who's on the Program Council?
So, you have certain members that are representing like a house of teachers or department like related arts or special education. And then you also have members who are considered permanent members, so administrators across the district. And then, and so it's a mix of those two. So the people who are representatives of constituents in the district, that rotates about every three years. And then other people like administrators are permanent members, so they're, they're...
So this is, I get the feeling it's a district-wide council?
Correct. Yep, people from both Allenbrook and Williston Central come to the meeting.
Oh, okay, just our district.
Yeah, just Williston.
All right.
And most years it meets four times. That's it. We've had great leadership.
That's good.
And Kathy Gray. It's been incredible. One of the things we said is, the Program Council has the ability to take on some really tough, sensitive topics and yet get through it in a very organized fashion and, you know, get everybody's input without it becoming really emotional. And talking about things like, how do you reduce the budget? How do you, where do you reduce things? Along with where do we need more help? But how do you pay for it? Those are tough, those are tough discussions.
I was just thinking of that tonight, actually. Like, you know, we put a lot of programs in place, but we don't really get to see the results other than what the kneecaps or what are those scores are. We don't, you know, apparently it's happening with Program Council. It's good.
Yeah, I wanted to add that we, at the end of last year or early this year, we made a website to collect all our minutes. And it did, and there's some quick pages that say, here, here's how we're doing on certain initiatives. So, I'm wondering, I could definitely get that to you guys if you'd like a link to that.
Sure.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a way for us to keep organized and for people to go back and say, it goes back three years at this point, to just say like, well, what did you do when you talked about things in October of 2013?
Right.
Where are we now?
Yeah.
So, I'll, I'll get that link to you guys.
What we're planning for the retreat, though, is a review of every single initiative we put forward for this year and recent years to say, like, what does Stargazers look like? What does Spark Academy look like? And, you know, how are they doing? And what about the new summer program we just put in place? You know, so that's, and that's what we're going to do. Spend a lot of time to show you, here's what we did, here's what, this is what it looks like now. And how's it doing? Will we continue to do it or not?
I think that'd be really helpful. So, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we have Patty Tersey and Melita Sadech-Lauten. We'll just say they're our ELL teachers, English Language Learner teachers. And they're here to do a presentation to the board. Great.
Hi, so my name is Melita Sadech-Lauten. And this is Patty Tersey, my colleague. I teach students in Williston Central School, three through eight. And I'm also teaching some students at Allenbrook as well.
I have an early house at Allenbrook at the pre-K and two level at this time.
So, we're here to do a little short presentation about our program. And I want to introduce our team as well. There are six of us now, and this is across CSSU. And we're directed by our curriculum director of assessment and curriculum and instruction, Molly McCloskey. And so, we can go on to the next slide. So our main purpose here is to present, because, just to present you who we are and to tell you a little bit about our program and the importance of it and to create more awareness in our district about English language learners. And so here, we just want to show you this graph, the overall CSSU ELL population growth since 2003 until 2014, actually 15 too, because it's about the same number. I think it's actually growing. We're just noticing more students in Shelburne this year. So, this growth mirrors a nationwide trend. And this is definitely like the largest, the fastest-growing population in the United States. So, we're seeing that in Williston as well. And we can go on to the next slide. So this shows the growth in our schools between 2010 and 2014. So, this is what we see at CSSU and this is in Allenbrook. And this is the overall growth of ELL English learners in CSSU and then in Williston Central School. So, in Williston Central School, we had a very, very big increase at like around 2006 and 2000, between 2006 and 2010. And then it sort of like stayed at the same level. And then in Allenbrook, we actually, we saw a slighter, you know, increase at the end in 2014. So, we have like, we have an increase, I think in the next slide I can show, we have about 125 students K through 12 at CSSU and 52 students K through eight at Williston School District. This does not include pre-K students. And now we have also, Patty will tell you a little bit more about pre-K students. Oh, I think, let me go back. Okay. So, yeah, so the enrollment has increased from 14 students in 2003 to 52 in 2015. An average increase of about 15% per year. That's kind of a calculation that we looked at. And our students come from two, from 23 countries. They either are born in the United States or they, their parents came from different countries and they speak their native language at home. And there are about, actually more than 20 different languages spoken in our school. So, we don't know exact number, but there are approximately 20, 25 students that have 25 different language backgrounds. So, our students and families come from different circle, life circumstances. Many of our students are newcomers, then refugees, immigrants, ICLEs, and S-Life, which we call like, it's basically an acronym for Students with Limited and Interrupted Formal Education. And some of them are coming from international adoptions. And there are big differences, you know, like in terms of teaching. I think it's very different to teach a student who came as a refugee or a newcomer who didn't have any previous schooling. We had some Somali bantus like a few years ago who pretty much grew up and who were born in a refugee camp so they didn't have any knowledge of English and schooling in general. So that was a quite big challenge for many teachers. And many teachers were not trained to teach students with that background. So, then our actually team has grown and now we're actually creating more awareness and making teachers more aware like what our students need and what kind of instruction. On this slide, you can see how we identify our English language learners. We have a protocol that is actually, it comes not from us, but it's, it comes from the state and from the federal guidelines. So, we have to start with taking a look, with kind of looking at the Home Language Survey and looking whether the students speaks other languages at home besides English. And so that's like the first indication. So we have to then either communicate with parents to see how much of the other language is spoken at home. Then we also take a look at their school records to also kind of get familiar with their school records and their background, their schooling background. And so we kind of look at the large picture of who those students are and what we need to do next. And so we have so many different situations. We have students who would say, I mean, parents would say like, my child speaks Spanish and French, but mostly we speak English at home and both parents are Americans. But then we have to sort of think, okay, so this may come from a, from maybe a class or from some other resources. So we communicate with parents and see whether, whether this instruction is needed for those students. And then we have students who are born in the United States, but one parent speaks different language or another parent speaks American English. And then in those situations, sometimes students, maybe if they communicate more with mother who's from a different background, they, you know, have a little bit more of language development in English because they didn't quite reach the proficiency in both languages or, you know. So it all depends on the situation. Then the next step is we have to screen students with WIDA model. This is a type of screening tool that is designed by WIDA Standards, the consortium in Wisconsin. And so they created a standardized test as well that we have to administer every year. And now this is going to be computerized next year, so we have to be training that as well. And then, so the screening with WIDA model, it's similar to the standardized test. It's a shorter version. It takes about an hour. And we, we actually, we screen all different, all four domains which are speaking, reading, listening, and writing. And then we have an overall picture of the student language proficiency in all those four domains. And then we administer WIDA standardized tests every March. But now I think the dates will change. I think it's going to be administered in the fall. That's the latest what I've read. And then we also consult with classroom teachers and administrators and other people in the building who are important. So, so that's pretty much like how we do, how the process goes and the protocol. And then we, we try to include parents to come and to also have an interview with them and so that, to hear the whole, you know, just to kind of learn who they are and what the background is and what we need to do next.
Once the students have been placed through this identification protocol, they're then a part of the ELL program. And then annually, for a child behind laws and federal regulations, the access for ELLs is administered. It is a federally mandated English language development assessment. It assesses students' academic language across the four domains of listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And most importantly, what it does for the ELL program is it allows us to determine an English language proficiency score, which then guides the level of services, frequency, and duration that students receive each year. So it's a summative examination and it's a standardized assessment that gauges on a continuum from zero to six where the student is falling in their English language development. And then there are state guidelines that, you know, if you're a one, you're a newcomer, you're a beginner, you see the children every day for up to an hour to two hours a day. And so it determines what our caseloads and how our time is used in direct services. And all ELL students participate in this assessment. There's an alternative assessment for special education students. So, there are two different versions. So all of our ELL students can participate. When they meet the CUP score, which is state determined, that is an overall score of 5.0 with a literacy score of reading and writing 4.0 in each of those domains, what that is, what that is saying is that this student can now access their general education independently without the support of English language services. Proficiency level might not be quite native-like, but it is almost native-like enough. In that time period, things can change. A second grader that meets the CUP score transitions to third grade. All of a sudden slammed with new content. The same happens when an eighth grader enters CVU. So it's very critical that these students are monitored. And the ELL teacher is available during those two years to consult with teachers and to provide support as need arises, even though it's not a direct service as the students that are on our caseload.
So is there formal assessment, once that child reaches the 4.0 score? Will you assess them or they're done with the assessments?
They're done with the, they're done with the access for ELLs. And after two years of monitored status, if they have met all of the benchmark criterias and standardized assessments that you have placed in place with the ESPEC and they're needing the formative assessments in their general education classes, then there's no need for, for worry. So we don't really assess them. That brings us to, now that they've been placed and we understand where they are, is really thinking about the underpinnings of the ELL program. The underpinnings are based on the theoretical knowledge of the field that is summarized as VICS and CAPS. In second language acquisition, VICS stands for Basic Personal Communicative Skills. And CAPS is Cognitive Academic Language Proficiency. These are very different. We all know that we get that newcomer and all of a sudden, two years, we see him jogging with friends in the cafeteria, on the soccer field, giving high fives, using American slang. But then, they're in kindergarten. They can even sound like native speakers. So, the difference in their ability to be able to successfully communicate and perform in an academic setting is very different than a social setting. It's just like if you got to move to the country of your choice. You could probably navigate, have to get around, you know, order, you know, often menu at your new favorite restaurant, but then you want to work professionally. And then it's a whole different ballgame. And so it's really the academic language proficiency that is the backbone of our program. The newcomers, they are taught the social language, social instructional language, and then we dig right into content. On top, yeah.
And that probably depends on what's happening at home, too.
Totally.
I mean, what language is being spoken and what's being reinforced and...
Exactly. It's a whole picture. And this brings us right to this slide, the acculturation process, which is another thing to truly be aware of. And I'm just going to read this because we came up with this as a team. I thought that this was, just kind of pointed it out briefly. Along with acquiring a second language, many students and families are also challenged by the additional task of acclimating to a new educational environment and culture. One of our roles is to provide support throughout this process. So, one of the things that we do is provide intensive family support, which can look very different for families depending on their level of need and sometimes also includes working on a larger team and a social worker. Our role is multifaceted. I don't think there's a minute of our day that goes unused. So briefly, as Melita was talking about, we identify ELL students. We provide direct language instruction. We provide class supports for students. We collaborate and co-teach with our general educators and content area teachers at the secondary level. We administer the annual WIDA assessment. We determine accommodations for the standardized tests. We administer standardized tests such as NECAP and ESPEC. We advocate for ELL students and their families. And we are actively involved in the homeschool community connection for our families. Last slide is about the Williston School District ELL Summer Camp. Just to give you a little bit of background, this kind of grew organically through a grassroots relationship between myself and an educator, Julie Rogers. We had a couple of newcomers from the Democratic of the Congo. And there was a spike in Allenbrook of new ELL students. And Bookmobile came to Allenbrook and it was enthralling. And we weren't sure how to get the kids to recognize that Bookmobile was going to be coming to their neighborhood. The parents didn't know what Bookmobile was. So, I just stumbled upon Julie one afternoon and said, hey, I'm going to go meet the bus at Maple Tree Place every Wednesday night. She said, I'll come along with you. So we met one summer, every Wednesday night, the parents came out, the kids came out. We sat on the stoop, we read, they got books. We mentioned this experience as a highlight of our summer to our director, Mullin McCloskey. And she was extremely supportive to get funding. We mentioned it to Walter. He thought it was a fabulous idea. And so, the Williston School District ELL Summer Camp was born. We are now in our fifth year. It is an all-inclusive extended school year opportunity. What that means is that we provide transportation for them, we feed them. And this is really big because a lot of our ELL students are also low SES. It is led by a team of three educators. And that team is myself, Julie Rogers, and Rick Shink. It is a four-week program. It meets three days a week, from 1:30 to 1:00. It includes field trips and guests. It is, could be looked at as enrichment opportunity, but is more than that. This is an opportunity for our ELL students to gain experiences like their middle-class peers. It is also an experience for them to build background knowledge, which then allows them to create things in their brain to hang their learning on when they're in school, so to say. It is coordinated with the Summer Reading Program at the Duane B. Allen because it grew out of that collaboration with Bookmobile. And Jill Chaufrin is always with us in coordinating that every year. We have varied themes. We have not had one repeat yet and we don't plan... Um, we have varied themes, we have not had one repeat yet, and we don't plan to. Um, and our themes align with Common Core and, um, Next Generation Science Standards, EOL Best Practices, and Twenty First Century Technology Tools. Um, camp registration on an annual basis ranges between twenty-three and twenty-six participants, we invite fifty participants, and, um, so we get about fifty percent to come to camp. And, um, this year, right now, we only have about a week left in our registration, and we are up to twenty-five students. In combination with our campers, we have high school counselors who are also EOL students and Williston residents from CVU, and it's a wonderful opportunity for them to mentor. We've done graduation challenges with these students, um, and, uh, have been very successful in integrating them as mentors. It is a one-room schoolhouse, one through twelve, um, which is an amazing experience. And as I said, we are celebrating our fifth year.
Amazing.
So hope to have many more.
Yeah.
So that's the end, and we're open for questions.
That was a great presentation.
Yeah.
It was very informative, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and your summer program is, is wonderful.
Thank you.
There's six teachers, are they all full-time?
Yes.
Yes, they are.
Do you access the students individually or as a group?
Well, it depends on the situation. Sometimes we provide push-in service instruction, and sometimes we pull them out in small groups or one-on-one, so, and it's on the need of, yeah. Cause we have students who are at the beginning stage and need to be seen at least four or five times a week. And we have students who are at the higher proficiency level, you know, where we just go for like half an hour to, you know, their best practices math in the classroom and then just help them with the language and with communication with their peers and, um, help them with assignments that they do in the classroom as well, or reader's workshop or writer's workshop.
It's really, I, I feel like it's vital that there are both service, not model deliveries in place because it is virtually impossible to teach a newcomer basic English within a classroom, too distracting, and the, um, instruction is too specialized.
I mean, now that you have fifty-two students, seems like you could probably bring five or, you know, or, you know, and they would, together, so, like, so they have a kind of EOL classroom.
We would love to do that.
You know.
But I think one of the challenges is the logistics. Um, I can only speak really for Allenbrook, being on the, on the teams, their literacy blocks, um, and other times when they might be available don't really always line up. So if I do have an EOL student in one house that might be matching some of the, um, you know, English language proficiency profiles of others, sometimes they're not always available. Of course, we try to do that, but we also need to be very thoughtful about when we're pulling these children out because we also don't want them to be missing any core instruction. So if they're in a reading group, we'll coordinate with the classroom teachers, not to pull them during that time, but when they're in independent reading, um, and so that looks different. The coordination of the services is a puzzle annually, and it's also a new target.
Yeah, I think for these children, it would be a little easier because this is, kinda like, seems to be key to their education, right? I mean, this is really important. I mean, they gotta spend the time, and, so, I just didn't know if it would, you know, be more beneficial to have them as a group and, you know, um, and, um, working, you know, together with them at the same time rather than one-on-one.
We try. We try to, we do, because also the social interaction in their learning is very important.
Yeah.
Um, especially when you're learning a language, it's really hard just to learn that with the teacher talking to you, you know, and with you. Um, but, uh, it's, it can be a challenge, but we certainly teach in small groups as well.
And it's more challenging in middle school to, um, pull out students, and I tend to actually pull them more in groups because at that age, you know, they don't like to be, um, separated from their peers, and, so we try, we try our best. Um, and, and it's usually during the core time that they like to socialize with their peers, so they don't like to be, you know, missing that part of their day, so.
Another thing we've done to address it, well, which I've been able to, to do, is to actually include peers. Um, I do have another endorsement as an English language specialist, um, and reading teacher, so that allows me to run reading groups for different, in different classrooms and also provide parallel teaching in, um, writer's workshop. So if I only have a one student or two students that are English language learners in one classroom, um, I can also pull students that are similar literacy levels and coordinate that instruction with the classroom teacher. So that's been, um, something nice to do, so they get pure interaction.
And then just another question about the summer camp, is it exclusive or can any student in the school come, come to this, or do they have to be identified as an EOL?
They have to be identified as an EOL because it's funded from federal funds that are...
It's federal funded.
...that are earwork for EOL students to fund.
Have you, I mean, I don't know what the, the standards are like, but I can imagine that there's probably some American students who have American parents who might not do so well on that test. Is it, has, is there any place for them to be enrolled in this program?
No. Again, it's because of the federal funding structure. But maybe there should be a different place to look at. I mean, it's funded!
Fair enough. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It was such a pleasure to be asked to come here today.
But they were inviting us.
I just wanna comment that it was really nice to have them participate in the, uh, World Language Sixth Grade Day last week. That was really, they had their own trifles about their two cultures and stuff, that was really, that was really nice.
Yeah, we do that, too. Every year, we, uh, we have a multicultural celebration and, um, work together with world language teachers, and, um, a lot of parents, that's also very good for the parents to come, to be included and recognized and celebrated, so.
Yeah, that was really nice.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good, so let's continue on, uh, with reports to the board. Um, principal's report, it was in your handout. Walter, is there anything you'd like to focus on this time?
Just, uh, two quick things. One thing is I left one of the retirement names off, and it's not a retirement, it's really a resignation, that somebody's taken their career in a different way, which was Marcy Foster, who is the SLP at Allenbrook School. But she's not gonna return this year, but that's the only one that was left off. The other thing is that I gave you a copy of the parent satisfaction survey, you've seen it in the bell. I mean, we, we worked on the wording to draw people in, to make sure that they realize how important it is to us, and we said that, um, we did it this year, uh, this year, we said we'd do it in the future, is put the results out in the bell, so everybody can see. What does it say? We had a hundred and seventy, about a hundred and seventy-five completed on first day.
That's, that's great.
So, that's good, and we're doing it, and the two bells and one more alert now before we're done. So we're trying to get as many people to fill out as possible.
So, embarrassed to ask, cause maybe I missed it in the bell, when will the published results occur?
It usually is in September, the first bell in September.
Okay.
You know, cause we usually go through them and look at everything.
Through the, yeah.
And then, just kinda put out, and, and I have to say, they're great. You know, we asked a couple of different questions this time, but in general, that, um, people are very satisfied, that's all that matters, were very satisfied. But it'll be in September because, you see, it's gonna come in late now, it's just a busy time here.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, first of all.
Um, anybody think? That's it. The other thing is, um, the last thing that came in late, we apologize for that, is there was a, a summary of the Chromebooks pilot that said, um, "How is it going?" And we had a couple of documents, we had one that was the pilot itself, and then we actually had input from the teachers about what they would change if they would do it again. And the, so we have that information, the, what we are looking at right now, and would say to the board, is that we're looking, you know, one of the questions that's kind of, is going to come up pretty quickly is, how do we give everybody this kind of an experience? You know, we have two houses that have this kind of experience, how do we broaden that? Because it's been incredibly successful in these two houses. And you've seen evidence of what the students have been able to do on previous board meetings. And what we're looking at right now is, um, can we purchase a classroom set for every single classroom? Um, we'll put it this way, can we offer technology, either Chromebooks or laptops, for every classroom teacher with a card, enough for every student in their class to have a device of their own? It is not going to go with them, in other words, it doesn't go year to year, and when you leave fourth grade, you would leave that because it belongs to the house, and you'd get a different one in fifth grade. And you would use that for four years, and then it rotates back. We're not gonna give them away, we're not gonna send them away, we're gonna keep them. But the idea is that, um, anytime the teachers needed these, one of the biggest things, we've been talking to every single team, Bonnie and I have gone around to and had a personal conversation about, you know, um, what about your access, you know, what would you do if you had more, um, technology in your room, how would you use it? And the biggest problem we have sometimes is just pure access when you need it. It's just not there. Somebody else has got it, because there's, they're in carts, somebody's got it in their room, and so what we're looking at is how do we increase access?
I, just two comments. One is, my kids, who are both in a house that don't have this, do all, a lot of these things anyway, so it's not exclusive.
Right.
These things are not exclusive to the houses that do Chromebooks. My kids comment on blogs, they do all these things throughout, either as homework or, you know, throughout the course of the day when they do have access to the technology. So I don't know that it, we can say that, you know, that this is gonna make it more accessible for everybody, cause most kids are doing a lot of this stuff anyway. The second thing is, even though we've added, I don't know what the proper technical term is, more hub space at the school, we still are having, there are still issues with access and people getting bumped off and things like that. So if you're gonna add all this additional equipment, and that means more people using it at the same time, perfect that makes here, um...
I was gonna say, well, we just haven't had the right guy.
Yeah. That, that just, you know, that's not gonna make life easier for, it's just gonna make everything a little bit more challenging.
Right, so we've worked a lot with Walter and the teachers, you know, sort of addressing that. I think part of the problem is parts of the building are just, you know, the construction is so old that we're winding up putting an access point in every classroom. Um, we, we just haven't had the loaded devices on wireless to know what's good in the building and what's bad. This is sort of been a trial and error, you know, to kind of figure out exactly where we have to put the access points. I mean, I think we have a pretty good, I think it's way better than it was in the fall. I think it's much more stable and reliable now, um, and we actually have in the budget for additional access points and, um, um, access points that support a greater density of, greater number of devices. I mean, we have one that we tried this year that we've seen support a hundred and fifty devices, and we've talked to all the teachers and around that access point, absolutely no problems with connectivity at the time. Yeah, so we're sort of moving Wi-Fi in that direction, you know, um, access points that support way more devices than we have now. So this has really been a learning year for us, trying to understand the characteristics of the building, along with the increased number of, uh, devices connected.
Well, and then with that, I mean, will we always have to have devices turned off during ESPEC testing, or would all these things that are happening allow us to not have to worry about that so much?
So, couple, couple things to that. So first, um, we are able to see, um, what devices connect to our Wi-Fi. Two-thirds of the devices that connect to our Wi-Fi on any given day are personal devices, not school devices. So two-thirds of our Wi-Fi go to personal devices.
Yep. Should policies be developed so that there's a priority?
You already have a technical thing to deal with also, that you could do it, but it'd be...
I mean, if people are using their personal devices at the expense of teachers being able to fulfill curriculum, because there's...
It's teachers also, it's everybody.
Oh, but people aren't using personal...
But they're not using, it's just accessing.
You just leave it off.
It's just looking, it's looking, it's connecting to the Wi-Fi. Yeah.
They connect immediately if you want.
But it doesn't necessarily create a load, so don't, you know, don't, don't construe that they connect with a load that they're creating, so that's one thing. Another thing is, I think you could argue, it's kind of like, we have this discussion in business, too, it's called bring your own device, and there's kind of an advantage to people having their own personal devices, it's something we don't have to provide, and they are, they may be using it for personal purposes, but they may also be pulling it out and doing other things that are school-related. So it's, you know, it's a, it's an interesting gray area.
But with the, so the other, so we, um, have more Wi-Fi, the other thing that's really neat, the price of bandwidth is dropping, dropping, dropping. So next year, for about the same cost as bandwidth, we're getting ten times more bandwidth to the internet. So that's gonna solve a whole host of our problems. Now we sort of work with a two-hundred meg internet connection, next year we're going to have a gig, um, from Williston through CSU out to the internet. So I think next year's gonna be, I mean, just in a better position.
That's a big difference, yeah. So I'd just like to say one thing. So, uh, I would like to see somebody come to us as a teacher or, uh, with a program that is interactive with the students, okay? So I understand it's important to blog, it's important to be able to have access to con math and all that, that's all very important.
Maybe, yes, sure.
But I think the next step that we need to do is we need to have the ability for a teacher to set up, uh, a program that says, "All right, here's the question, what's three plus two? Everybody put the answer down," right? So, put the answer down, she knows what kids are getting it right, what are getting wrong, where they need to work, you can, and you can do this through, through the whole K through eight. You know, I think that that would be a worthwhile investment.
How it's interact, I mean, how they're inter, how they're using the technology and the cost.
As a tool to actually educate the children, you know?
I mean...
It exists, I know, I've been to plenty conferences that have these...
We have two sets in the buildings already, um, but the thing that, I thought, I thought you were going someplace else, I thought you were going to say, cause this is what's happening, that the students are handing in their homework electronically, and the teachers are writing the comments and responding to it electronically, it's paperless, there's no paper.
No, I want it to be interactive and live and...
For my child in Full House for four years, I mean, without having a one for, you know, a...
Yeah, same here.
I mean, she's...
The grades are online.
Yeah, everything's online, all the commenting, they don't submit anybody paper, everything is shared with the teacher, and then my daughter had to have it shared back today cause she wanted to make a change, and, so they, they, they do, all the...
That's already happening.
And the other part, well, what you're talking about is old technology, that's not new technology. I mean, really, we have two of those sets of building, um, but there, you know, you can do that, it shows up in the board, it says how many were right, how many were wrong, what percentage, and who got what. And so that's trying, but that's not necessarily a newer technology, it really isn't.
Well, that's the kind of interaction that I think I'd like to see in a classroom, so you get immediate feedback.
I think the other thing...
And they don't necessarily need to share with the kids, I mean, or whatever, however they wanna use it, but, you know, that's the technology they think that's really important.
One of the thing that the lawyer was talking about today that was speaking, said that, um, how do you provide access to students to make sure they can access reading books and all that sort of thing? Well, the Chromebook can do it. It can actually change, change the level that it's presenting materials, and it can talk, it can actually speak. You know, it's that kind of thing that allows for a lot of flexibility, and one of the things the teachers talked about when going around today was really about the fact that they can customize the education because it's so much easier to do with technology than try to find the right book or the right reading level, whereas they can look up passages and, and look up different reading levels and do that immediately, and then the students have access.
So, yeah. We're moving forward for everybody getting computer access at school, right?
I think there's a, I have a couple of suggestions. I think we should, um, at our retreat, make sure we get this in our work plan for next year, so that we can, cause we, we've, we've done this before, we, you know, we've had Bonnie come in and some of the teachers come in, I think it's a good time to do it again, especially as we're considering this. And I also think the other, my, the other, my, only a comment on this is that, although I understand that you, that your children are able to do this without the one-on-one, there is a matter of equity here. And, you know, your children's capabilities may not be other children's capabilities, and we need to keep that in mind, too, and so, um, you know...
I don't know what you mean, what you mean their capabilities?
Well...
Cause most of it they do at school.
I, I understand.
Okay.
I understand. But I, I think, my opinion is, is there are advantages to being able to offer that one-to-one capability during the school day to all of our students.
Yeah, they would have, at school, they would have ac, I think kids should have ac, more access to computers.
I think it's just a question of affordability.
Yeah.
Yes, this is within the budget. It is within the budget.
It is.
And we talked about this for the last few years, every year we're adding new technology, I think we should continue to add new technology.
But, yeah, right, and to Mike's point, the, the reason we're able to consider this without looking at a budgetary increase is that the cost of the technology has decreased and the ability of it has increased, and that's a great place to be.
I mean, we need to just keep moving forward.
But, there's a, there's a big but on the horizon now, and, and I've been very supportive of wanting to expand the computers and, and share the concerns of equity. I don't think we can underestimate the budgetary pressures we're gonna see next fall.
Oh, I know.
And having to live with this two-point-three percent increase.
Yep, I do understand that.
And, um, unfortunately Walter's not gonna be with us, who is creativity, it seems, has pulled us out, uh, year after year, but, um, the administration's gonna have to work doubly hard, I think, to, to light up... to, to light up the fact that we got three and a quarter percent wage increases to three and a half percent now with the Paris. To fall within those, those guidelines and still expand the other programming opportunities. Something may have to give. And I, I hope not, but the math on its face seems to say something's going to have to give.
The, you know, the, I think, I think we're going to talk about this, and I think we can, we can have teach, if we want a presentation by, say, SWIFT teachers about how has this changed their instruction, what has happened, or a combination of Equinox and SWIFT, we can do that. The thing we're saying, we're not saying this is a one-to-one device and you're going to use it all day long, we're saying it's in the classroom.
So it's available.
It's available. And anytime the teacher wants it, because one of the things that even, I know how many computers they have up on Full House, they're short two classroom sets. And they're concentrating on certain grade levels, just because they don't have enough. So what this does is says, okay, now you're never going to have that problem, you will have access when you need it. It's not going to stop you from following up on the report you were writing because your class can't get the computers. So all it says is, and they stay in that, they're owned by the teacher, they stay in that room. It's a little different than what we talked about in the past. And I think it's different in a really good way.
But I honestly, I gotta be, I gotta agree with Josh, you know, there are a lot of ability, ways to access computers already, and kids have access at home and those who don't have access at school. And I think that we just should be cautious concerning, considering that, I kind of feel that there's going to be quite a bit of pressure next year to cut some stuff and, you know, not buying some computers is certainly better than having to get, get rid of some feet on the ground, as far as I'm concerned.
Yep. So let's, let's make sure we discuss this at retreat and, and figure out how we're going to navigate this issue next year, because that's, we've got to...
Now, let's just be clear about what we're kind of addressing, you know? You proposing some type of a fiscal amount that we're going to be discussing, or what's the discussion going to be about?
Because it's within the budget.
Phrase it.
I don't think, I think we have to look at it in, there's a, there's a line item amount for computing services. And we either choose to leave it as is, because it's part of the baseline every year, or we choose to reduce it.
Okay.
Well, I think it'd be helpful to know, like, what's our, what do we already have?
Yeah, that'll be part of the presentation.
And then what, what is, you know, what would be...
So, you get, so...
In the budget that you're going to buy with it?
Right.
Because what if you have to, across the board, cut 1% off everything, or...
Yes, so in the interest of time, this is what we figured, this, this is what we decided retreat, so as we go into the budget process, we give administration plenty of heads up that, of what our expectations are. Because that's the time to address it.
I think the, I don't understand you, what you're talking about is the year up, not next year's budget, the budget after that.
The budget that we will consider to put to vote next March.
But as we're...
Next year.
Next year.
But as we're considering what equity means, and you're making acquisitions or more important deployments of this, this resource, that I think may have bearing on how and who gets it.
The, the other thing you look at is, after the expense you have it, you may be able to reduce the next year's budget if you had to, because you've already got the equipment you wanted available in the classrooms as a tool, that's what you have. So now you can say, okay, we'll reduce it in the future.
Will Greg be with us at the...
He will be with us for half of the time of the retreat, spend half his time closing out for a lot, and then the other half his time transitioning with us.
Okay.
This is something I'll, I'll give you, that, this was developed by, just so you can look at it, this was developed by Williston teachers after a lot of discussion about why are we doing this? So this is a Williston document. And we remind people, it's on our website, and we remind people, this is why we're looking at this. I'll take one of that.
Good.
And this was developed by teachers. And the last thing is, the high school is going one-to-one in ninth grade, starting next year.
Jeff came in and told my, seemed to be ninth grader.
Nice timing.
That she didn't have to ask for a laptop for graduation gift, they said.
And they will, they will have, they will own them at the end of the four years of high school, they'll keep them for four years, and that will be the start of one-to-one at the high school, I think. So what we're also looking at is, that's what our kids are going into. And we would like them to have more experience to be ready for that, absolutely.
Right, and we focused on, at this stage, not with the seventh and eighth graders, right? A lot of these pilot projects have been with younger kids.
Yeah, this, this, the, the proposal we're putting on the table is three through eight, three through eight.
You'll get three through eight done in the next budget cycle?
In this, next budget year, yes.
Oh, I didn't appreciate that, okay.
Yes, that's what it'll do, it'll take WCS and have a classroom set in every single classroom across three through eight.
Then we're fortunate.
We are, yeah. You know, and I think, I think Kevin was, what is causing it is that, and Michael's done great research on this already, and we know what we can get and how much it's going to cost. It's, they're about three of these things for one laptop.
Yeah.
Really. And that's why it's even possible to do it. It happens to be right now that this is kind of hitting markets and they're really improving Chromebooks all the time about durability, drop rate, you know, and dropping two feet and all those kinds of things. And they're made more for schools, they're more rugged. And you don't need a case because they're already made with it.
Plus Google's made, made it in all that, or for the classroom. It's a good thing.
And so, that's why I'm saying the equity is, or equal, is that everybody would, every single classroom, grade three through eight, would have that experience. That's pretty powerful.
And we'll achieve it in the next, next year.
And then it'll help in the next year because we've already got them.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so let's see if we can catch back up a little bit. FAPAC?
What's the third quarter financial management?
Oh, yeah, I hate talking about money. Speaking of money. The third quarter FMR, that was in your handout. Actually, I did have a couple of questions, I don't know Walter if you can answer them or not for me here on this. Thanks for catching me there. Here it is. So if I read the executive summary here, it says, so expenditures were estimated to finish 17,065 better than budget, revenues are down 36.9, so that leaves a set of 19.9 deficit. Does that include, is that inclusive of the extra work that's been done in facilities? Like the hundred, so, so that, that's, that's...
Because that, if you look at that operation and maintenance line, it's like 200,000.
Yeah, I know, that's why I was, that's why I was asking.
It includes that.
That's, that's, that's great. And then I assume it does not include the ask that, that may be coming to us from food service because of 25K over?
The 25K is...
It's in there too?
It's reflected in here.
Well, you're going out, good.
You're not allowed to get though.
Okay.
But I know that the food service, they, they put it in at...
Well, I thought, see, this is why I'm confused, because it, it says that the food costs are running, they're, they're having a hard time holding the line within the current fixed subsidy.
Right.
So if they finish, if they're going to finish 25K over, so you factored the 25K over into that final number?
Okay, that's already in there. It's already in there.
So they, like, they're getting another 25?
Right, and even with that, we're still looking at short 19,000 right now, but we still have to finish the year. And you don't know what's going to happen. We're trying, we're doing the best we can to really bring it in at zero if we do.
It's time to implement the, now to enter your no-bag lunch policy.
Well, I mean, you can really see in looking at, some report I was looking at, the drop in, how many meals are being purchased, or, and, and, you know...
And the new standards are hurting.
And then the new standards are hurting, my kids aren't buying it, I mean...
I know.
They're not buying and they're not eating it, and they, when they have to take it, they don't eat it.
Yeah.
And, and that's the part that's really hard.
Yeah.
Maybe we can get a presentation early next year on, on the food service, because that is always a mystery to me about, you know, year after year, they're coming back with more and more requests.
And Scott can do it, Scott is excellent at making presentations in the 20th grade.
Very good.
Can I just ask one?
Yep.
One other question, so all the work that was done around the perimeter of Williston Central School, did that come in on budget, over budget, I mean?
That is, it's through the construction fund.
Okay.
Which is money we get from impact fees, from income. So that's in another budget act.
Okay.
And I think you saw in here, there was a page of the three outstanding projects.
Right, is this the Williston Capital Fund?
Yes.
Yes.
So, the drainage, so the 48,000, is that what we were expecting, or is that, is that actual?
That's about what it is, and that's all the work in the front of the school that have done all the way across.
Yeah.
And, you know, for the first time in those big rainstorms, it worked.
I, I just, I just parked, one day I was parking there, and one of the guys said, oh yeah, this was a bigger project than we thought. And I thought, oh, I wanted to see if that means it's, it was, it ended up costing us more, or, or it didn't then?
I, I mean, I haven't seen the final one.
Means they didn't bid enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, it means they didn't bid enough, that's what we're saying.
That's what I mean.
The theater was flooding and Boyd's kegel was underwater.
Yeah, I know.
And so we're supposed to take all that away, which has a, after this first big rainstorm, the only thing I know they were doing is checking one of the drains to see if anything was blocking to make the drain faster. That was it, not one of the new ones, like one of the old ones.
Yeah, that's great.
Great, great. FAPAC?
We have not had a meeting since our last school board meeting, or FAP hasn't had a meeting. But we have, the final FAP meeting is next Thursday, and they'll be working on the calendar of events for next year, see who's returning and not. We did just have the Williston Runs for Education last weekend, and then Appreciation Week last week. So, and then I think the only other thing that FAP has coming up is the Lake Monsters in the summer.
Yeah. Great. Facilities, Kevin and I did meet with John and Lyle between these two board meetings, this last board meeting and this one. We sort of just discussed in a, in big picture terms, kind of what our charge was and how to proceed. I think, well, we're scheduled to meet again first week of June. And we're going to get back together and suggest other members of the subcommittee, so folks from the teachers, folks from the community, stuff like that, so we can put everything together. I think we anticipated it's going to take about four meetings to kind of go through the process, and I forgot to bring my notes tonight, I, what I'll do is I'll send out an email, kind of the process that we envisioned. Kevin, do you have anything to add? Because I'm a little light on information tonight, but that's pretty much it.
Well, I mean, it was just a preliminary meeting, we decided to form a committee of, what, 14 people or something, have four meetings?
Yeah, I think it's going to be less than that, but yeah, somewhere around there.
Not 14.
Eight, I think, is what we're shooting for, yeah.
So, we were trying to find somebody from the community who's maybe a contractor or had experience in that, you know? One, maybe one, two community members?
Yeah, one or two. Yep, and then folks from within the community.
Could you find out from, through the bell before the end of the school year, if there's any parents that might?
Yeah, we should do that. Yeah, we should do that. Throw it in the last bell.
I'm going to Rotary this week.
Yeah, and, yeah, Walter's...
Yeah, your name came up.
Yep.
Rotary.
You're going to be in the community after this?
Just go give me the Rotary, I did talk to one of the Rotary members who happens to be a mentor, you know, mentoring program, because he actually is a builder, you know, a carpenter or something. He does a lot of work on houses and things like that, but he knows construction.
I think I know the gentleman you talked to, he'd be a great...
He might have called you, I told him to talk to you. I received this, I was going to give you this, this is from the project manager from DOR in Whittier Architects, and his question for the committee is simply, do you want to do an assessment of the facilities according to programs at the same time? That was the availability of program space for the programs that Williston has.
That's interesting.
And you can, I mean, I can give you this and you can think it over...
Yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah, one of the things we discussed was that it made sense to start engaging with engineering firms, not necessarily, to get, to get bids, so we could jump, start the process and... Okay, great. And then committees, I think we, that's it? We have a...
Policy.
Policy, yep.
Yeah, so there was like some minor changes and suggestions, and there's one thing that came up that, there was this code H7, I don't know if you guys were, if this was brought up at the CSSU level, but it's the parent guardian involvement. And it's just a kind of policy that states that, you know, parents, you know, should, can be involved or should be involved, I don't know that...
Is that on the discussion things when we go down?
I'm looking to see.
That's in section 6.0.
It may not be up for discussion.
Yeah, I don't think it came up, but I just wanted to get your guys' input on it, because, and, I, I don't know if you want, I can just pass that down, but...
Which one is it? Did you say H7?
It's H7, it's going to come up, and it's kind of a, just a policy that doesn't have a whole lot of meat to it, but it says the parents are welcome to come into the school and shadow kids, look at programs, make suggestions. And there was a little bit of discussion about, well, do we really even need this? And, and I kind of felt like we shouldn't get rid of a policy like that, that says that we are, you know, in favor of having parents come in, and even if it doesn't really, you know, hold a lot of meat, because I think that parent input is important. I mean, you know, we, we certainly don't have an overwhelming amount of input from parents, so I don't think it's an issue at this point. I know during Bridges, there was a lot of parent involvement, and maybe that was testing some of the committees, but, you know, I think that from a level of just, you know, pure political, you know, ease, it would be best not to get rid of a policy like that.
Especially after the legal conversation was held.
Well, it, it, it defines the culture of which we're trying to foster, and we want an inclusive culture with parental involvement.
Yeah.
That should be reflected in parameters.
And then ultimately, we make the decisions and have to live with it, you know?
Yeah, okay. Now, I'm going to, I'm going to put up a note there. We skipped around a little bit, but the last item on reports was CSSU debrief, so good timing, Elaine's here, keep us honest. A few things came up tonight that weren't, that we're not discussing here. I think the biggest one really was a, kind of a pretty extensive discussion around the legislative update, stuff that's just happened recently, and I think our intent is to discuss it much further at retreat. I would, I think I would not do it justice if I tried to go through everything, but...
About its summary?
So the summary is, is we, so we reviewed the, the H361 which passed, right? So the summary is, is we, so we reviewed the, the H three sixty-one which passed, right? And what potential changes that, or opportunities, depending on how you look at it, it presents us, and some challenges too. So, basically, and Josh, maybe you can help explain it better, and Elaine, while you're here, help me out. But there's a, you know, its intent is to encourage consolidation. And there's incentives to do that, and depending upon, you know, what size school district you are, and how you may approach this, you may be able to take advantage of some tax advantages. It also presents some challenges around our ability to, really to raise our budget, to put it for, lack of a better way to put it, maybe there is a better way to put it. But it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna make us report how we're increasing, how we're spending our money against cost per pupil. And there are, depending upon how much you have spent there, you have leeway between zero, and what, five and point something percent? And I think for Williston, we come out around, what, two point three six percent before we incur penalty?
Right, so we, it's not that we can't raise the budget above two point three six percent, but we're gonna have to pay a premium to do that, or a penalty, if you will, to our taxpayers. So.
It's an increase in the per pupil, eh, per pupil.
Per pupil.
Not, not, not the percentage our budget goes up, it's the per pupil.
Right, so, you know.
We've been very good about adjusting our budget, I think, with our declining.
We have, but we, but we do, but, you know, when we, we're able to present a whole budget that has a much smaller percentage increase number than a per pupil.
Right.
Right, so it does.
Is that even legal?
Enrollment drops, the divisor.
Goes.
Smaller.
Right.
Which means that per pupil goes up.
Right.
That's the issue.
And when you think about eighty percent of our costs are labor related, and are fixed by contract at rates significantly above two point three six percent.
It definitely puts us in a squeeze.
No problem.
What it forces you to do is as the, as the enrollment goes down, you need to adjust the staff.
Which is.
And which over the last ten years may be the wrong, I think that we, I think we have done a good job of changing that. But in general, that's not necessarily the case.
But I think this does something more difficult, because even if we are proportionate in our cuts for sizing of our students, this doesn't match what our budgetary increase is, even on a proportionate level. We still have to raise, for the remaining teachers and faculty, three and a quarter to three and a half percent on wages, plus healthcare, which will be beyond that.
Right, but if you eliminate, just to carry out the analogy, if you eliminate five teachers, that cuts into that three and a quarter percent, right? Significantly.
If it's, if you change student ratios.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. Student to teacher ratios.
Yep.
So tough, tough choices.
Right.
And so the other thing, I think, if I may just briefly, that I think we should talk about at the retreat is, what are we gonna do for community engagement if the parameters have changed with this legislation? And that the assumption now is that there's going to be redistricting or consolidation. Although there are options to opt out, it seems to me that that is a significant issue for our community, and that we need meaningful public engagement. Because I, as a school board member, may have my own personal feelings on these issues as it pertains to local democracy and the quality of education. But I, I feel that we'll need to educate our communities and then hear from them about what they want, because there's gonna be consequences one way or the other.
Yep.
And I think to get the community to sometimes pay attention to some things, you mean, you need to have big issues that sort of get people to want to come to a meeting, because we've seen, you know.
Or at least read the information.
Yeah, yeah.
Because there are definitely trade offs here. They could say, oh, we really were, you know, went into local control as we've known it for however many hundred years. Or a ten cent decrease in your tax rate when you're just talking about it, right? That's not chump change.
And is it truly a ten percent?
Yeah, I know that.
If everyone.
Ten cent.
Is it truly ten?
It is ten cent on yours.
But if everyone does it, it'll be normal.
Everyone isn't gonna do it though. I mean, there's not a single person in the state that thinks everyone's gonna do it. Pretty much people think there's gonna be like a cluster of early adopters who agree to that. There will be a huge middle of people who are saying, yes, we're gonna get there, but it's gonna take time. And then there's gonna be a cluster at the bottom that are gonna say, like, stand up and guard the door. They will eventually, in two thousand nineteen, the Secretary of Education, you're also not here, but they will come kicking and screaming. And so it's just a matter of like, where you think you are. And if you think you're in the middle, which is probably where lots of people think they are, and you're in the middle closer to the end of like, we're gonna get there anyway, or you're closer to the end of like, no way, they're not gonna do this. And I think that, like, depending on where you think you are, that might inform which direction you want to take it, right? I wouldn't want to be the supervisor reunion in the fifth year of this where there are no incentives, and you got to the same place as everybody else, all your neighbors, who got the incentive. And you've been, not only did they give you incentive, you've been paying for the incentive.
That's a really good point.
Perhaps the piece, I think we just really need to be thoughtful about that. And the public engagement, I think you're absolutely right, needs to happen, but it needs to be clear without lots of rhetoric, and just, here's what's on the table, is what this looks like, is what the law says. And, I don't know whether we do forums or whatever, but how we go out in terms of sharing this information and educating the public will have a lot to do with how they'll hear it.
How readable is H three sixty-one?
Well, itself.
Have you read it? I've started to read it. It's, it's a big deal.
Yes, but the summaries are good.
Yeah, the summaries are good, the BSBA summary is good.
And they're clear, and I think the way, you know, just the summary I gave tonight, I was just going through, you know, the thirteen pages I have, and we have a hundred pages of this. To me, as I was like reading it and outlining it, it's logical. You know, you start with, here's what we know, the findings, this is what it looks like in the honesty. Does anybody think this is great in the end? Here are the goals that we have, and therefore, here's what we're recommending. And in the recommendations, therefore, here's what the impact will be on different groups. And if we don't get there, now this is what's gonna happen. So I think if we can keep it succinctly for them, and think of it in like, here's the story to tell, and then let people wait.
But it needs to happen in order to affect our budget. I mean, the public engagement in some ways needs to happen like late summer, early fall.
Right, yes.
Well, to Elaine's point, if, if we need that public engagement to understand where we're trending, right? If we, at least from my perspective, if the public comes out and says, we want a consolidated school district, that's in our best interests, then it seems to me economically, we want to do that quickly.
Right, this is the year.
Because that's the full benefit. But if we're not getting that message from our constituents, that's a different ballgame.
Yeah.
I think there's another link part to this, and that is with a consolidated board, which would look everything like a CBU board, right? That's what, that's what it would be. And RSU, you would have a board that looks like a CBU. Four reps from Williston, three from Schelbe, two from Heinzberg. Or, or double that number, because it has to be proportional. So then, I think we need to do some work around, what do the local councils look like? So there's nothing about local councils, councils in this legislation, but there was in Act one fifty-three. You know, like a requirement to figure that out. I think it would be cool for us to figure that out. Like, what would that look like? And does that look like a separate board, council, advisory board at each of the local levels? Or does it look like the reps from the Red Board? Those reps can be a select board too, if you're trying to do this, because what's happening there? What we do in education, you know, so that there's still that sense of, there is a Williston part to this. I don't know. I think we ought to figure that out, because that would influence public policy standards too.
Who would we merge with?
Excuse me?
Who would we merge with?
Each other. That's why I said it would look like the CBU board. It would be, CBU is that board. That's a merged board.
So each town board would dissolve.
Schelbe, Schelbe, Heinzberg, and Williston. In this case, that includes St. George.
I wouldn't have to come here on Tuesday.
It would be an S U. It would take our S U and change it into an S V, and there would be one board.
And, so, okay, I'll just have to read this, because my, my impression was that the goal was to, was about smaller schools that had, like in Witsfield and Warren, and these smaller entities that are having, you know, they're inefficient because of their ratios, that they should be, it was kind of directed towards them to merge, plus the districts merging. But, you know. I don't see how there's cost saving and getting rid of us sitting here.
And I thought we, I thought we met the thousand people ratio.
Oh, we totally met that.
Yeah, so that's why I wasn't sure how it would affect us.
For us, for us, it becomes a question of, first of all, I think that the legislation says we need to show that we are. Secondly, we need to, we need to basically say, we're gonna stay the same and forego the advantages of being an early adopter.
So there are savings though. I mean, when you think that, like, for, in the fiscal part of our organization, we do seven budgets. There is no doubt that there is a cost associated with seven budgets. And not just during October, November, December, January, we're, we're encroaching it. The number of people we need in order to keep that all straight is very different than one budget.
I mean, it could be.
There's no doubt that.
There's economies of scale sometimes, right? So, a fourteen million dollar budget, maybe.
And I will say this also.
That are knowledgeable about the budget might be more effective. I mean, it's like Walter's job's not gonna go away, and he still would have to do the budget for the school.
Our schools are big, and our ratios are right on target.
Yeah.
But I think that one of the things that our S U should consider though, is that the reason we are as efficient and effective as we are is because of the people who are in all the positions. And I don't mean my position, I mean all of the positions. Board members, principals, central office leadership. And it's fragile, because we all work and behave the way we do, because we all agree to. And every once in a while, we get to a touchy place. I walked into one, you know? Kevin thinks that, you know, we ought to have a policy that says, parents can just come into the school and shadow kids.
No, it's already a policy.
You know, so, I'm just using that as a, as a point of.
Turned around.
Right? There are gonna be other boards that don't necessarily think that. And when we behave well, we go with the consensus. And when we don't behave well, which is easy to happen, we still party, and people do different things. And now that becomes totally unmanageable. And then it's really easy to see that we're not doing the best work for our kids, because we're bickering and fighting about different things.
But it also, it seems to me, you know, the laboratories of democracy argument, in the sense of, by allowing individual districts to depart from the norm, and get a degree of experimentation, that allows for diversity of ideas, and a way to test best practices.
Right. I think we're, we're doing that to like such an extreme of the mark. There is no other place that does it to that extreme.
Well, I'm, I'm just talking about us.
Your situation.
And about California.
No, they have.
They have charter schools. We have charter schools.
Right, right, right. They, their school districts are organized in much greater anyways. I mean, there are, there are school districts, I'm not a proponent of this, but there are school districts that have more students by, fivefold than the whole state.
Yeah.
The county base.
So we have, I mean, there are some very, very dysfunctional districts. And I think that they're for the grace of God, or any of us, because it's so dependent on who the people are in the situations. And it's easy to imagine that, how we figured it out, and we're, we'll, we'll stay at that high functional level regardless of who the board chairs are, who the board members are, who the principals are, who the superintendent is here. Lots to really think about.
Looks like it's some reading today.
So on that note, yeah, do your reading, because come prepare for the, at the retreat, both at our level and at the CSSU level. And I do recommend you try and carve the whole day of it in, because that will be a, this year especially, I think it's gonna be really interesting across the CSSU with this discussion. That's something to think about.
We're gonna discuss that second half of the day.
Yeah, right, we do locals in the morning, and, and everyone, CSSU in the afternoon. So let's move on to discussion matters. I think, we haven't even gotten to action yet. We are, we've been discussing a lot tonight. So let's do that. Six dot one policies. So these are the policies that are up for discussion this month. Kevin, I'll throw it out to you. Is there anything specifically here you'd want us to call out to take attention to?
No, they, they were all pretty well written.
There's one item I'd like to raise.
Yep.
And this is with policy G one. And that has to do with the strikeout of, with regards to curriculum and the role of the board.
Yeah.
In addition, programs being added to or deleted from the curriculum shall receive approval by the appropriate board before being implemented. And I fully appreciate that. Charge of curriculum falls on administration, but I do believe that there is some role for the board here. And, and maybe it isn't necessarily an approval process, but we should, I think there should be at least a notification requirement so that in the event the administration decided, we want to get rid of Spanish, or foreign languages at Williston Central School, that before that happens.
We can still.
We, we are at least notified of that.
I asked that same question, Josh. That was my same concern. And apparently, we still have control over that.
I don't think it would hurt to send, to be very clear, that there would be a notification process before that happens. I don't think we're treading on, respectfully, the administration's.
And they can't recall that. So, that, that's exactly the same issue I had, but the, I think it was Cindy Koneman said that we'll, that it's still, we still have that ability, we still have control over that.
But if we don't have notice, then we can't exercise for this.
If we don't have notice, well, I hadn't thought of that. I mean, I, I don't know.
Unless your own tech and tell us or something.
Right.
Hmm, nah, it's a different angle.
I think it's a fair, I think it's a fair thing to think about.
Yeah. Notification of changes.
Yep.
In events.
In events.
Notification.
Yeah, that's good, good verbiage. I like that.
Good.
I can take that back to the committee. I don't know. We're meeting May twenty-seventh, so.
I just had, I had a question about the wellness one. Just, I hadn't, I didn't realize that the Wellness Committee included so many different people. I thought it was just staff at school. I never, I don't know, I never remember seeing recruitment of parents and things like that, so, but that happens.
Okay.
So advance notice of changes in the curriculum to board, to boards. Something like that.
Yes.
Yeah, before a curriculum is added or deleted.
Okay.
In the first of advance notice.
Retreat planning. So, we've talked about some things we, we want to discuss. I can tell you, I took some notes at the CSSU meeting tonight. Basically, what we'll do amongst the things we've discussed, we'll, we'll kind of do a year in review. So we'll take, we'll take a look at, you know, what we did, what we looked at. We'll discuss, you know, since we go through a three-year review cycle of different kind of parts of our, of our educational supports, we did, we did special, special supports this year. The other two are strategy and academic rigor, and we do one each year. It was interesting, it was noted that, that next year, I think it's academic rigor, but the board chair said, well, with everything going on, maybe we should do strategy next year, because that is more in tune with legislative stuff that we've just discussed. So we could talk about that. But my point was, is that we, we want to take a look at the information we received in this cycle and get feedback. You know, was it appropriate? Did we get what we need? The next time we go through the cycle, what more do we want from it? We'll do that. We'll talk about tech integrations, because not only are we talking about what we, what we've talked about here locally tonight, but there was a tech integration survey and a piece of work that was done throughout last year, reported out last year. And so, well, I think we'll take a look at where we stand versus where that report came out. Then we've got to do a work plan for next year. You know, fill in around the, you know, the regularly scheduled reviews that we'll have. And I just noted again that we wanted to make sure we made room for technology, and we made room for food services. And I don't need, we don't need to plan on any further than that right now. If there are other things you want to discuss, please get with me on email. Thank you.
I, I didn't contemplate food services would happen at the retreat.
I think it's, no, no, we need to make sure that we plug it into the work plan. That's why I noted it, that's all.
Got you.
So, so if there are other things that you feel we need to address next year, if you, if you could do me the favor of sending me an email, I'll make sure I get, I have it on a list. Because what we end up finding out usually is that we have more that we want to do than we know we have time to do. And we'll have to make some tough decisions and pick the ones that are most important to us for this year coming up. Okay?
And what Walter was talking about, does that happen as part of the year in review, or?
Well, that's what I was looking at. We were talking about taking our AYP goals, and also taking programs or changes that occurred this year, and kind of giving you an update.
Good, okay. I'm all for that.
And what does, what does technology look like for you? What would you like around that?
So we'll bring that for the whole S U, the audience.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm not expecting anything at the retreat, from you on that.
Well, you.
From you, I am.
Yeah, and it would be the same for everyone. So we remember Walter, when we did that, the board came up with some goals last year, like five or six things, and where is each school? You've already done a report on that, or only this year, this will be the possible.
So I, I don't know if this is part of it, because I can't really remember those, those five items. But I remember when we first started this discussion about one-to-one computers. You talked about transformative education. And it's, a lot of the things that we got on the little handout today were really positive things, but it didn't, to me, resonate as. And it's, a lot of the things that we got on the little handout today were really positive things, but it didn't, to me, resonate as how are we changing the delivery of education? And, and where are we in that? So just.
It really is.
Because if we're now achieving technologically that place, you know, what do we need to start thinking about?
So what is it, when are we going to get this information? Because we've been working on the report at the local level, just looking at some of the legislative changes and things like that, because we have some new programs. So we just need to know what it is pretty quickly, because we're about two weeks away.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is the same report that you did to the board, gave the board, and you've done it lead also. Yeah, no. You're gonna be ready for it, no worries.
No, we have some other things we just wanted to show you. One thing we have is, um, like, we have spark results that are pretty outstanding. We can either just give them to you, or the teachers will come and report you.
I think we'll be, we won't have the time.
I just think it takes too much time. You really don't. That's great for, for your work plan. If you say, hey, this is great, we'd like to hear from the teachers, build it into your work plan.
Definitely bring us the information, and then we'll factor that in. Okay? Any other thoughts on retreat planning? Okay, communications. Do, what do we need to do? Well, I think what we need to do, actually, for the next article submission is get the word out on. Yeah, but I'm not quite sure what we say.
Where do these articles appear?
When we do them, the Williston Observer usually gives us, uh, like a block of two hundred and fifty to three hundred words max, where we can basically write our, write our own article and.
Okay, because I noticed one in the last.
We haven't done one, I think, since budget.
Okay.
Well, the other thing, the other thing I was thinking of, of using it for soon was, uh, to, uh, throw out, uh, a request on the facilities committee, give it a, do some explanation and ask for volunteers. Okay?
Seems like a good idea.
All right. So I guess it's my turn. So I'll write that. And get it to you guys for review, and we'll get it out to the community. Okay, um, action matters.
Oh, can we just?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Back to your question. You had a question about the, the.
So after our last meeting, you sent us an email that had the two documents about the Allenbrook Community Park. One was the Williston Central School arrangement between the town and the school about the use of the, the use of the facilities, the use of the parking and all that, and that was signed by the chairman of the school board at the time and, um, the chairman of the select board. That was the agreement.
Correct.
So the one for Allenbrook was signed by John and, uh, maybe the select board chair. I'm trying to find them here. And so I just was wondering if that was okay. I mean, I'm just curious about that. Because I also looked through all the minutes from two thousand and eleven, and I can't find any record, reference to this being brought up at a school board meeting in two thousand and eleven.
Interesting.
Two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, nothing in the minutes.
And if I could add, it's been a while since I looked at those. The license goes through twenty twenty. So the license will expire in five years. It seems to me, if we've got concerns and the town is looking to have a long-term construction build out, we should all be talking about this, because if, you know, theoretically, if they did something we didn't like, we wouldn't, you know, we don't have to renew the license.
True. So it seems that we would want to have those discussions with the town earlier than later. Okay. Work plan.
So that was, that's just my.
Thank you. That's, uh, that's a interesting piece of information. Great. Um, good. Thanks for reminding me that you had that piece of information and that question. So now, action matters. Uh, seven dot one, can I have a motion to adopt the CSSU two thousand and fifteen and sixteen student and PD calendar? We can discuss after if I can get a motion.
So, no.
A second?
Second.
Okay.
I just have a question.
Sure.
This was just approved at the CSSU.
Correct.
And I'm not sure why then, if it's approved at the CSSU, then every board has to approve it too. It just seems like, isn't each, isn't, isn't the calendar pertinent to each school district and not necessarily something that the CSSU should be approving, but each member's school district should approve instead?
It needs to be the same calendar, so really we, it's a best.
But you don't have your own students. We are all the students. That's what I.
No, but you're, all of your students go to CDU. All of your students go to CDU, so you can't really have a different calendar in Williston than you have everywhere else.
Doesn't the CDU board have to approve the calendar too?
Yes, but to your point, the CSSU board should probably approve it. It's the same calendar. It's not like you really have a choice. Last month, when there is a discussion, that's when people can have an important amendment back. But in a way, it's one of the things about being an SU instead of an SD.
That was just sort of why I was asking. Yeah.
And you do it because it makes people feel good that they got to take a vote on it, but honestly, there's not a vote that we could take that would be different. Imagine if, like, Charlotte decided that they're going to take a different week off, and their kids aren't going to go to CDU, or, you know.
Yeah, no, that was my.
We have the right to.
No, that was my question.
Actually, they don't even, by law.
Really?
No.
So where are we even doing it? That's a good question.
A hundred and seventy-five student days by law have to be the same as.
No, I understand, but we, but, I mean, theoretically.
You're talking about one day.
Theoretically, we could, we could say one to a hundred and ninety, right?
I know, because there's a contract.
Well, aside, aside from.
And the contract with the teachers is what.
I think we're trying to come up with a situation where we can change the calendar. I can't come up with one, so.
I noticed it on the CSSU agenda, and I thought, well, why is it on ours and on theirs?
You'll see it all the time.
Yeah.
In fact, we just this year.
This is a new question.
No, it's just we're trying to, again, you know, when I said earlier, we are successful because we behave as if we're in SD. This is an example of that. So this year, for the very first time, after many years of doing discussion and approval of the regional calendar as an action item, we just put it as a consent agenda. By law, you can't change that. So we've said, let's put it as a consent agenda. There's no point in discussing something that you can't possibly change. The reason to have this on, uh, on a discussion item made to the local boards last month is to get input. And let's say we had heard, when we did our D group, tomorrow we'll all get together and we'll say, what happened at the Williston meeting, or Iceberg meeting, or whatever? And there had been, hmm, we're not ready for this vote, because it seems very different.
They went on vacation, like.
But we realized, no, we're ready to vote. There was no pushback at all. And maybe it should just be at the SU. That would be a decision that the boards would make. Let's just do that at the SU, because in the end, let's still get input locally, but let's make the decision because it's redundant.
Well, and the, and the discussion should be in February, right after the regional calendar is developed, and not like when we're up against, you know, everybody wants to know what the school calendar is for next year by now, so.
Right, so.
If you want to collect feedback, that's my.
Right, the regional calendar, though, is the calendar. So we, we could print that in February. And like I said, we're going to vote on it because we need to take board action, but it is the calendar.
And can we vote on it in February?
You, the regional calendar, we could. If the superintendent said, head it up, right? And we, we have followed a nine-year deadline, superintendent, he headed up in February. The law says it will tend.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Seven dot two, support staff contact, contract ratification. Can I have a motion to approve the support staff contract, um, as presented in your materials? Gets us to a discussion, folks. Can always amend.
I'd like to support a motion to start discussions about this.
Nah, I need, I need, I need a motion we can take action on, so.
Like a motion that we take action on the support staff contract.
No, can I have a motion to approve the support staff contract?
Yeah, make a motion that we approve the support staff contract.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Discussion. So, uh, there was some discussion about, about this at the CSSU level, and it was actually.
The same question about this. It's like.
Is another example. Yes.
They just approved it at the CSSU.
It's a cavalcade.
Yes, but.
So this one is different a little bit, because this board could not approve it. Here's the situation you're going to find yourself in. You'd be on your own, you'd have to get a negotiating team together, you'd have to negotiate with your own support staff, and you would bear the entire brunt of the cost.
All right, let's do it.
That is how that works, and that's true for teacher contracts.
And there's probably not enough money at stake here.
To go.
To go down that road, as opposed to theoretically a teacher's contract, which.
Even the teacher's contract, to go alone, I mean, you know, you're sharing the cost when you're doing it with.
I'm not saying I want to.
No, 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 just saying, but you could. It's more money at stake for sure.
So, so my comments were, at the CSSU level, it was noted that it was a, a very respectful negotiation. Cindy and the team did a great job. Uh, there was good back and forth. And, uh, one of the members commented that they felt like, well, in the end, both sides, you know, gave a little bit and ended up where they were at, and, you know, there was a kind of a, a positive sense around the process. We may debate the result, but that was, that was the comment. Uh, and it passed, of course, at CSSU.
Should contract negotiations be like that, alone at the end?
When it happens, it happens, you know, you take it.
It's such a relief, it's like, because during the process.
Yeah, it gets, yeah, right.
The anecdote I've always heard is, both sides aren't walking away unhappy, and something.
Well, both sides haven't left something on the table, right?
Depends on what they asked for. They could have asked for something they really didn't think they were going to get, anyway.
It's a process.
I, I, I commented, and I'll, I'll share again, that again, if we're looking at a cap of two point three six percent, and we're agreeing to wage increases in excess of that amount.
It pushes us.
Yeah, it's not sustainable. And, um, and, you know, Cindy pointed out, we're probably talking about thirty thousand dollar increase across the board. From what it is today, plus, you know, a three and a half increase, but, um, every amount's going to make a difference.
It is going to make a difference. Any other discussion, questions? Those in favor?
All right.
Those opposed? Any abstentions?
I don't understand.
Very good. Motion passes. With abstention noted. I only vote to break a tie.
Oh, I see. Oh, that's good. I need my training next week.
Okay, what I'd like to do for personnel is, um, uh, take a motion to, um, approve the slate, and then we can discuss any individual ones, if you guys are comfortable with that.
Yeah.
So could I have a motion to, um, approve the nominations, uh, as presented in seven dot three, um, for all of the personnel hires?
Let me just get them on the record. Just, uh.
Oh, you want to do that?
Yeah.
The names or just the type of positions?
You're taking seven point three point five out of it.
Right, so I'm talking about, so, yeah, so the motion would include, uh, seven dot three dot one, two, three, four, and six.
One, two, three, four, and six.
One, two, three, four, and six. Sandy had inadvertently placed five and seven in our agenda, and they, I think we're for another school district or for CSSU.
I think they're for our school. They just.
Yeah.
They're coming under CSSU.
They're coming under CSSU because there's special reasons.
I'll make a motion to approve this slate.
Great. And a second?
And then I'm going to move to go into executive session, just so that we have the freedom to discuss. We may not, but I feel like we get very close to that line, um, and I'd rather not be on it.
Okay, uh, then what I'd like to do is, uh, table this very, and then we can, we're going to have a very quick action item here, because we really should have amended the agenda. Um, and then let's get our consent agenda done. So we'll do executive session at the end, very quickly. So let's table seven dot three. Seven dot four, point of representative to the CDU board. I don't know if you saw my email, either yesterday or earlier today, I can't remember when I sent it, it's been kind of crazy, but, um, we're not ready to do this, because we haven't had a chance to vet, but we need to do it very quickly, because, uh, the new user, a new user, phew, tell, but I'm in IT. That the new board member, uh, training is coming up, uh, next week, and then we have the retreat, and it really makes a lot of sense to have, have, uh, the board member that we appoint, the, that we appoint a board member, so that this person can get that training and attend the retreat.
But don't, if we, we need to have a meeting.
Yes.
So we need to have enough time to warrant the meeting for this, right?
Right, we, we only need, what, twenty-four hours to one? There's, it's, we, we can do this, is what I'm saying, is we, we have enough time. So my suggestion is that we, tonight, we come to a common consensus on a, on a, an evening that we can, evening or evenings, that we are available, that we can ask, um, the candidate, we have, we have two potential folks, and I know one's very interested. So my suggestion is, is we, we find that time, uh, and we do everything in one evening. We, we discuss, then we, and then we, you know, take action. So let's talk about time. Let me just look at my calendar real quick.
I'm sorry, I was pulling up the calendar, maybe not paid complete attention. Is, is the, the final vote going to be at our retreat?
No, he wants.
No, I want, I want to warn a meeting.
To have a special.
I want to have discussion. Uh, we, this is all open. This is, yeah, I need a quorum.
Yeah.
Uh, I want to, I want to vet the candidate or candidates.
To come.
And I want a motion to, uh, approve for one of them.
Yeah, so all in one meeting?
All in one meeting. You know, I don't think we need to drag it out unless you can give me a good reason, but, you know, hopefully it should be an hour of, an hour of everyone's time. You know, my, when is the, uh, when is the training? Is it?
Next Wednesday.
Next, the twenty-seventh?
Right, the real significant date is June.
I know it is.
Because CDU board would like the person to be able to attend the retreat.
Yeah, my, 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 my first, kind of my first thought would be that we, uh, we do it on Tuesday the twenty-sixth, which is, are we from today?
Unless you push it back, you know, past six, I can't make it five o'clock.
We can do that. There's no reason we can. Well, I defer to the quorum, but I can do that. You want to do like a six, it's like six-thirty to seven-thirty?
Yeah.
Kevin, what do you think? I know that your schedule's. And we'll ask Javana, of course, but I'd like to get, if you can get a quorum of us to do that.
You don't even know if the two people are available for that, though.
I don't, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna push it hard. You know.
Well, the twenty-sixth works for me.
Come up with two choices?
I would, I would like to, just in case.
Twenty-fourth or twenty-sixth?
Twenty-fourth or twenty-sixth? Well, twenty-fourth is a Sunday.
Oh. Working Monday. No, can't do the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth.
Is early morning?
Twenty-ninth. I can't do it early morning on the twenty, not on that day.
No, no, I'm just saying like on the twenty-second at like early morning or.
Like early, like a Friday morning thing?
This week?
Yeah, it's pushing it really tough.
I can't do it this week, but I could do it next week, early morning, except for the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, I'm pretty open. I've got a bunch of time.
Okay, so, so plan A would be the twenty-sixth at six-thirty, and if that doesn't work, do you want to do, uh, the, the twenty-eighth at eight AM?
I, I'm, I'm not, I'm opposed to that on principle grounds. I think we should make it so that members of the public can come theoretically. I don't think anyone probably will, but if we do it at eight in the morning, I think that really deters.
Okay, is everybody available on the twenty-eighth at six-thirty PM?
Yeah.
Um, we, yeah, we just got notice about that Sterling House event, that they wanted us.
Okay. Well, it's our, it's our plan B. Okay.
The twenty-eighth, you said?
Yep.
The twenty-eighth, you said?
Yep.
Twenty-sixth is...
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna push the folks for the twenty-sixth and if they have a conflict, the twenty-eighth will be our fallback. Okay? All right, thank you. Consent agenda. Eight dot one, uh, can I have a motion to approve, uh, the minutes from the regular meeting of four fourteen?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting?
Second it.
I have just one thing I noticed, which I don't know if typos are corrected, but in, under six point three in the minutes, it said, it, it had the word two TO and it should be two, the number two. And I forget what the issue was. I didn't write that. I just wrote, sorry not to print everything.
Mike, if you could take a note to let Sandy know to make that small amendment, with that amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, uh, so director's orders and then policy adoption. We really could have just done this all as a slate, but, um, can I have a motion to approve director's orders?
I'll make a motion to approve the director's orders.
One second?
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes and then eight dot three, policy adoption. So these were up for discussion last month. Can I have a motion to approve the policies as presented in eight dot three?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Great. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. Okay, um, real quick, uh, meeting dates, so annual retreat is what we're up to here. Uh, June first, real important. Please, please attend. And then the twenty-third is business meeting where we wrap up, uh, all kinds of fun stuff like tax anticipation notes and...
How long is that, June twenty-third?
That's usually not, uh, that's usually about an hour, max, max. It's pretty quick.
It really is. For things that we can't get earlier, tax anticipation notes, that kind of thing.
Does that have to be here or can you have it in...
No, it's, it's actually, it's actually, uh...
It needs to be here because otherwise, Bob, Mason and I have to trot around to seven different places.
Well, I'm just thinking it's only an hour. How are you going to be able to speak to Mason?
No, we do it all together. It's all the same.
Yeah, we actually do it all, all the boards meet in one room.
Oh, I thought it was...
Yeah, yeah, we really do. Put it all together.
Oh, I got you. Sorry, I missed your question.
Yeah, it's really simple.
Yeah. Yep. Okay, um, so can I have a motion to go into executive session for personnel?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
One second.
Great. Uh, motion to approve the, uh, personnel nominations, the slate. So do we, uh, do we have any further discussion? All right, if not, all in favor of approving the slate?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes and with that, um, we can adjourn.